Impossible odds on this one, but I hope you take as many of the vermin scum with you as you can. Make them pay.
I have good seats for this show, yes? Now blow the horn and let this spectacle begin! Incoming vermin!
A child of Sagoraki! If only Okri could see me! Aye, I call that one! Stop stealing my kills, Azungie!
Perhaps you should be faster, old doggy.
Good strike, now! Let's have another! Stand fast, ding-borazzi! They're only rats!
Look to the shadows. Did you see feely eyes in them just before?
You're a given, man. Ghost player?
Prepare yourselves, rats stink all over. Stand fast, they're on their way.
I'll kill everyone! Chop it to pieces! Pray to Sigman, the gods are coming.
Come out, come out, wherever you are.
Want to bet for how long?
Why the, uh, Bretonnian dance? Keep your feet on the ground!
Get ready!
Hukrat!
Here they come!
Bogger, a pack! A lion's hell, a globidere! One less stinking gas rat! Black cough, green and that giant!
They gnawed my bow!
Move! All will die, dies! Crook, the rat race is about to fire! Don't waste that bomb! Bomb here!
You know the drill, be on guard. And here the pack comes again.
Ha ha ha! The fagoraki are swarming!
When they come, leave some for me. Don't stand there, Skaven player! Good show!
That gas rat needs to die!
Look out, he's running away!
You got the hook rat! Nice! Let him shoot me out!
See? Assassin's wrong is to feel my axe!
Enjoy it while it lasts. Oh, I said, stock and one supplies. I know you want.
Bomb!
Potion here!
Caspian, watch those glows!
Another wave incoming.
Glinda's beard! They're tired of them! Watch out! What a black rats!
One way down, and less more come. Any second now. Here we go again.
Hold steady, Dory! Here for the headshots, fire! The tide comes and finds me ready!
Déjà vu!
Thank you. That's going to wash.
Where you hit it, Zarin? Go for the head! Sagoraki black fur ahead! Stolen, Berman. Urban, we'll try to leave you some. The rat race, gossip! That must kill the little things!
Do some effort there!
More potions over here!
Arrow, flat powder, the door up!
The vermin are charging!
That gas rat needs to die! Gas rat's dead! Have the rat beasts! Tall's brass, rat ogre! It's attacking damage! Rats, you should drink more, Azungie! You're already so unsteady on your feet! Rat ogre, we'll slaughter the brute!
Kill them anyway you can!
A cogrey! You see, that's fine axe work, even if I do say so myself!
Fine? You've almost cut him to pieces!
Ah, well, he wouldn't hold still, would he? Potion here! I can't vouch for the taste.
I'm getting trounced! Here, ammunition.
No rest for the wicked. Stay ready. The putrid filth spews forth again.
Don't let them gather! This hand!
Open chest, it's arson! Gas rat's dead!
The wind's turned against me!
The crack! Kill that scrub! And the akrat's mine! Bomb! I smell some ammunition!
No time to rest, slack jaws. The sea of Skaven hauling in.
Save some for us. This is too easy! A horned rat! Cuz it's a hawk, he wouldn't be found! Open the vents, Brimgy, they're over there! Listen, the rat plague! Black rat! Kill that scrub! Head for the hand, Azungie, else no effect! Glinda's bones, another black fur! Kill that gas rat!
Gas rat!
Ah, you filthy gas rat! That's when you're coming, you storm farming! Black rat! Kill that scrub!
Back to work, you bastard!
Azoongie, you know where you're hitting, aren't you? Right!
Yeah, I... Wait, what was I saying? Supplies are here, whether you deserve them or not.
Potion over here! He ain't wrapped for you!
Oh ho ho, here they come!
Urban, we'll try to leave you some.
Yes, that's what I like to see!
Open ears down!
Crum, he's magic! I've globbed the air!
Want to blow?
A lion's hell, a globidere!
Whoa, that's last laugh, you fool!
You need help, sort of.
So, still standing, I see. I approve, sort of. You know the drill, be on guard.
A bomb, just like Okri used to make!
Oh ho ho, here they come!
Shit, that's a rat! Hold your breath! Crook, the gas rat!
Globbed the ass down!
It's firing! Get clear! Get around it, don't face it head on!
The gunner is targeting me!
Sagoraki black fur ahead! Glinda's beard! They're tired of them!
You are in the wild.
There above, I can smell...
That armor! Go for the eyes! Good, Ranger! Soul vermin! Head for the hand, Azungie, else no effect!
They're coming here yet.
Why the, uh, Bretonnian dance? Keep your feet on the ground!
You hear that? Oh ho ho, here they come!
Sounds welcome.
Make him smile with that strike!
Oh bless, you're right!
Drangler's death! We got the hook rat!
I hear the sloth! It calls its hook rat!
Ah, a bomb! That would make some courage!
Supplies, what do you look? Oh ho ho, here they come!
Rat ogre!
Globbed the air!
Gas rat's burning!
Brimgy, kill bloody vermin! Globbed the air, petted us!
Warm your fire with the green.
This is no time to keep lying down! The beast sounds hungry, let it taste steel! In flames, a failed one! What a brute! Hack it to pieces! What a brute! Hack it to pieces! Rat ogre, we'll slaughter the brute! They have a cogrey! They have a cogrey! Ah, not giving up now! Rat ogre, they're quicker than they look! A cogrey! Rat ogre, they're quicker than they look! Takes some killing, that will! Takes some killing, that will! Takes some killing, that will! Rat ogre, we'll slaughter the brute! They have a cogrey! Rat ogre, they're quicker than they look! A cogrey! They have a cogrey! A cogrey! Come on, a cogrey! I have a present for ya! Rat ogre, they're quicker than it is! What a brute! Hack it to pieces! Rat ogre, we'll slaughter the brute! Drangler, I see! What a brute! Hack it to pieces! Hold on, chippeys! A cogrey! Takes some killing, that will! You see, that's fine axe work, even if I do say so myself!
Keep it up!
By the six holies!
Prepare yourselves, rats stink all over.
That hurts, but you'll have more!
Oh ho ho, here they come!
Here they come!
Good shot! Watch that rocky!
Where's the new garden?
Not a good sign. Stand well, darling.
Black rat's mine! What a black rats! Sagoraki black fur ahead! The tide of Sagoraki! If only Okri could see me! I'm a wanderer loo, I'm still locked too!
Still standing, I see. I approve, sort of.
Potion here! Medical supplies!
Get ready!
Sagoraki, kill it! Kill it now!
Here they come!
This assassin's dead, watch for others. The gunner's dead! Where are those rats?
I never stood a chance!
A fine shot! And not at this! Where the black rats?
Any second now! Oh ho ho, here they come!
Incoming pack!
Saggy, kill it! Kill it now! More ammunition here!
Shittering noise! Backstabber! Not so lightly now, assassin!
Got her order!
Stand ready!
That Sagarakia won't be far! Keep watch!
Bomb here!
What? Yeah, I'm awake! I wasn't napping!
Ammunition! Thank Valaya!
No rest for the wicked! Stay ready! Oh ho ho, here they come!
I can hear them!
Valaya's raging hell, you bastard!
Nice leap, place!
Remy has bombs! Another black fur!
So many!
Oh, decent effort there! But can we do it again? Supplies available! Oh ho ho, here they come!
Bogger, a pack!
Tail off!
Good kill, that bliss! Fancy next time, eh?
Coming!
Black rat! Kill that scrooge! Sagarakia black fur ahead!
Get it alive! On the bed for how long?
Get your bombs here!
Found a potion!
Potion here! I can't vouch for its taste!
Oh ho ho, here they come! A boom for the-
Stand fast, Strangler-azi! They're only rats! You're striking armor, sir! Aim for the head, wizard! Their armor is tough! Couldn't hit that side of a mountain! Blacky Blackfur! Remy has bombs! Another black!
Get clear!
One of them black rats! Who is tracking me! Warrior rats are coming!
Go together, take them in pairs!
The rattling gun! Have lost gin to those things!
Your technique lacks efficiency!
I didn't fall asleep, so you weren't terrible, I guess.
Healing tools, if you're feeling weak, Strangler-azi!
Now time to rest, slack jaws!
Medical supplies!
Here they come!
Get ready! The pack is coming!
Chop it to pieces!
Nice kill!
Gashrat!
Go after the gashrats!
Good kill of a gashrat! Black rat's burning! There's movement in the shadows.
Black rat's over here!
Sagarakia black fur ahead! Remy has bombs! Another black fur!
Take the victim! Enjoy it while it lasts!
A bomb, just like Orkri used to make! Healing draught here!
Prepare yourselves, rats stink all over!
Listen! The Strangler dies! Now!
What in? I'll kill every one of them!
It's a Strangler! Don't let it grab you! Strangler!
Bomb here! Kill all you can!
Look! One of them black rats!
You impart regiments!
Black rat! Kill that scrooge! Blacky Blackfur! Blacky Blackfur! Did you hear that?
I tell you, wait! I can watch!
Blacky Blackfur!
Here they come! Let's move, come!
Grab those bandages, Dory! Healing draught!
Get ready! Oh ho ho, here they come!
Ha ha ha! The Sagarakia are swarming!
A storm!
You're an effective witch! Aim for the head!
Black rat! Kill that scrooge! One of them black rats! Another black rat's parade! Remy has bombs! Another black fur! Sagarakia black fur ahead! Blacky Blackfur!
Don't be living on it! You're not bad!
Bomb!
Don't forget to fill up on supplies! Potion!
Watch out! Black rat!
Listen! The red plague comes! They haven't gone far! Beware of the poison!
Boom! Dash! That's armor! Open the eyes! Armor, sure! Black rat! Kill that scrooge!
Black rats!
Incoming pack!
One of them black rats! Remy has bombs! Another black!
Father! Oh wow!
Sagarakia black fur ahead! Hold steady, Dory! Remy's axe has quite a hook! Smash that toy! Kill the Strangler! Don't waste that bomb! Look! Healing draught!
Any second now!
This one to us, you bastards!
Here they come!
Rat Ogre, coming for us!
They have a racogri! Just your hook against my axe, would ya? Fat master's torch! What a brute! Hack it to pieces! Racogri! Takes some killing, that will! Takes some killing, that will! You see? That's fine axe work! Even if I do say so myself!
This is no place for survival!
They have a racogri! Rat Ogre! They're quicker than they look! Racogri! Rat Ogre! They're quicker than they look!
Patria!
Come on!
Rat Ogre! We'll slaughter the brute! Just a flesh wound, Kricky! What a brute! Hack it to pieces! Racogri! Takes some killing, that will! Rat Ogre! We'll slaughter the brute! The tide comes and finds me ready!
Burn them all!
Good kill, that bliss! Fancy next time, eh?
Decent effort there! But can we do it again? Hear that?
Assassin's closing in!
There's armor where you hit it, sir! Go for the head!
Don't relax, that's when they'll pounce.
Look! One of them black rats! A warrior rat!
Still alive!
On the bed for how long?
I found a bomb!
Supplies have arrived! Oh ho ho, here they come!
Fire the arts, let to me!
Fires them against me!
Rat Ogre! We'll slaughter the brute! The beast sounds hungry, let it taste steel! They have a racogri! Perhaps you should drink more, Azuki! You're already so unsteady on your feet! You're already so unsteady on your feet. Ratoga, they're quicker than they look!
The wind's coming in.
What a brute! Pack it to pieces! They have a recongri! What a brute! Pack it to pieces! Ratoga, they're quicker than they look!
Oh! What magic!
What a brute! Pack it to pieces! It takes some killing, that will. They have a recongri!
Still standing, I see. I approve, sort of. No rest for the wicked, stay ready. Oh ho ho, here they come.
Ha ha ha! The fagarakia's swarming! Take more care, Azunggi, you're all used to it, see? Azunggi, you know what you're hitting hard, right? What are them blackrats?
Don't deliver me, you're not bad.
Ah, a bomb, that'll wreak some carnage!
You know the drill, be on guard.
Rattle's joy, bomb here!
It's not bumbun, who's I'll tell you that. Steady, Dory, assassin inside! That blackrat's mine! Blackrat! Kill that scum! Black Blackser! Grimpy ass pawns, another black! Fagarakia Blackfur ahead! What are them blackrats? That blackrats mine!
No time to rest, slack jaws.
A bomb, just like old Kree used to be!
Good job killing that poison rat.
Crook, that rattling's about to fire! Good kill, Dory, fire turn next! Get out of here! Good strike, now let's have another! That looks like it hurts, Sergeant. Check its head off, Grimpy, don't hit the bloody arm, huh? Grimpy ass pawns, another black! Blackrats mine! Blackrat! Kill that scum! Grimpy ass pawns, another black! It's not bumbun, who's I'll tell you that.
Could do with Sholi's blessing.
You need aid, Kruba.
Oh, I felt better.
Don't you have a healing spell?
Time for some rat catching.
Ammunition here!
Prepare yourselves, rats stink all over. Oh ho ho, here they come.
Sounds like a lot.
Ah, those furry bastards.
You're gonna die in a hail of water! Nice shot, Dory! Fagarakia Blackfur ahead! That blackrats mine! Fagarakia Blackfur ahead! What are them blackrats? They're crap, it's only one shot, Ragi!
You look ridiculous, stop jumping around!
Supplies for you lot.
Fancy a healing draught? Healing draught, over here!
Hudson cash! Oh ho ho, here they come.
The tide comes and finds me ready! More ammunition here!
Now, gas attack!
Grimpy ass beard, gash! You should drink more, Azunggi, you're already so unsteady on your feet.
I'm going for that.
Black Blackser!
Fucking armor!
That's you, hard wreck!
Well, I didn't fall asleep, so you're welcome. You know the drill, be on guard. Oh ho ho, here they come.
Time for some rat catching.
Hard is being captured!
I tire of letting you flee, little bear.
I tire of getting caught.
Storm burn him!
That's armored, off of the eyes!
Brimstone in your next step, father.
Yeah, the storm! Oh, I take her a good beating!
Come, Sergeant, there's still many rats to kill.
Hear that? Oh ho ho, here they come.
Smash that toy, kill the strangler!
Take out the rattling gunner! Filthy gas rat!
Azunggi, you know what you're hitting hard, right? Look, what are them blackrats?
Blackrats!
Aim for the head, Azunggi, else you're off it! Black Blackser, that giant!
Win this game and slay her! Good show!
No rest for the wicked, stay ready.
She was...
Oh ho, here they come.
Ragi, kill that runner!
Gun rat!
Get along, just don't face your head off! An assassin wrongs to feel my axe! Hold steady, Dory!
Come on, Skaven, I'm near the burning fire.
Grimpy ass pawns, another black! That blackrats mine! Boom! Portion, don't waste it! Someone grab those bandages.
Get ready.
Portion here!
Here they come.
Crapping gun!
The tide of fagarakia, if only old Kree could see me!
That gun will shoot again. I'm taking fire! Take out the...
Blackrat! Kill that scum! Blackrat! Kill that scum!
Want to bet for how long? Supplies are here, whether you deserve them or not.
Grimpy's magic and globa here!
Here they come.
Just your hook against my axe, would ya?
Fat master is down.
Crook, a gas rat!
Look right over here!
Hey, Grimpy, go over there!
Black Blackser!
Fagarakia Blackfur ahead! Grimpy ass pawns, another black!
Clad, I'm dying!
Bogger, a pack!
I'm alive!
Gotcha! Come on! Give the gunners a moving target! Give the gunners a moving target!
At last, ammunition!
Any second now. Oh ho ho, here they come.
Have the rat beasts!
Don't be fooled, they're still about.
Watch that rocky floor!
Get ready!
It's a lot of poison! Gash! They're gonna get hit! No! Azunggi! Look, what are them blackrats? Kill that gas rat!
That's coming!
A lion's hell, a globa here!
Bust you keep jumping, I've come to call!
Zul'spire, what are you doing down there?
They are from my blinds!
Whatever you say, Grimpy! Black rat! Kill that scrooge! Black rat! Kill that scrooge! Yeah! Grab those bandages, Dory! Potion over here!
Get it off!
Prepare yourselves, rats stink all over!
They're gnawing my bones!
Oh ho ho, here they come!
Stand fast, dingborazi, we're only rats! Couldn't hit their side of the mountain!
Taking heavy damage!
Potion here! Warrior rats! Sagarakhi black fur ahead!
Oh wow, with the blacky!
A donkey! You know what you're hitting on, right? Look, one of them black rats!
Strike it on him!
That black rat's mine!
What? Yeah, I'm awake! I wasn't there!
Ammunition! Here's a healing draught!
Look, potions here!
Don't forget to fill up on supplies!
Here they come!
Grimpy ass beard, a tide of them! Grimpy ass, that's quite a hook! Right to the donglins! We got the Strangler! Sagarakhi black sir! Black rat's mine! Sagarakhi black sir! It never stood a chance! Yes! Kill!
You said that one there, but can do it again?
Don't waste that bomb! More potions!
No time to rest, slack jaws!
Oh ho ho, here they come!
Ammunition, fill your pouches!
Healing draught in sight!
Watch your back!
The wind's turned against me! Go for the shot there!
It's the armor!
Sagarakhi black fur ahead! One of them black rats! Grimpy ass boom, another black fur!
Here they come!
Not bad!
A potion stash! Healing draught here!
You know the drill, be on guard!
Bomb here!
Oh ho ho, here they come!
Their craftsman needs only one shot, Rabi! Crook, that rattling's about to fire! You're striking armors, Jack!
Yes, with the head, and only four!
Black rat! Kill that scrooge! Sagarakhi black fur ahead! Black rat's mine!
Master, gather the after my fight!
Good kill, then we'll sprangy next time, eh? Black rat! Kill that scrooge! Look, one of them black rats! It's not bog burns, I'll tell you that!
You hear that?
Comes here!
Oh ho ho, here they come!
Healing draught, over here! Watch that rocky fall! Get out of here! Holy gash! A lion's hell, a globidir! Gas rat! Kill that gas rat!
Hello!
Too much magic!
Pray to Sigmar, the hordes are coming!
You're making my day! Ha! Stop for me!
I keep her asleep so you're terrible, I guess?
Potion, don't waste it! I smell some ammunition!
Get ready! Oh ho ho, here they come!
Stand ready!
Got a healing draught here!
Now, follow me!
Black stuff!
Get on me!
Black fur! That's armored, go for the eyes, Kruber!
Get feet!
Sagarakhi black sir! Show yourself, assassin raki!
Too much magic! A warrior rat!
Right, cockery in that giant! Impressive!
That's another sleeper, kid! Poor little man, not bad!
Ammunition here!
Oh, okay, stock up on supplies! I know you want to!
Healing draught, over here!
Oh ho ho, here they come!
That critter's fast, don't get it! Ha ha, right to the donglins! There's armor where you're headed, Aaron, go for the head!
There's a fireball waiting for the next rat that shows its muzzle! Nice! Main black's efficiency! They're no longer gods, I certainly approve!
Come on, man, you're a bastard! Grimpy ass boom, another black fur!
Stone vermin!
Black fur!
Standing, I see, I approve, sort of.
Medical supplies!
No rest for the wicked, stay ready!
Here they come!
You look ridiculous, stop jumping around!
That cockery!
The wind's...
Here's a flesh wound! Come on, cockery, I'm a pritton for ya! Ratoga, we're slaughtering them! You see, that's fine axe work, even if I do say so myself! Ratoga, they're quicker than they look!
Mine is standing against me!
You were asleep so you weren't terrible, I guess?
Potion here, I can't vouch for the taste!
Any second now!
That was great, guys!
Oh ho ho, here they come!
Smash that toy, kill the Strangler!
They're carrots, they'll hide until it's time to strike!
Aim for the head as own gate, else you're off it!
Sagarakhi black fur ahead! Oh, that black rat's mine! Soul vermin!
Ammunition!
Sagarakhi black fur ahead!
Strong damage!
Can't make a woman smile with that strike!
Sagarakhi black sir! One of them black rats!
These poor bastards are...
Black fur! Sagarakhi black sir! Black rat! Kill that scrooge! Grimpy ass boom, another black fur! The potion's here!
Bad bugs!
No time to rest, slack jaws!
Oh ho ho, here they come!
Stay together, take them in pairs!
Take that, Skaven!
Crook, a gas rat!
Decent effort there!
A potion!
Any second now!
Potion, don't waste it!
Oh ho ho, here they come!
Ammunition here!
Here then!
Gas rat! The gas rat needs to die! Globidir has gone to blow! Warrior! Let's have sex, Dory! Good strike!
Save some for us!
Here's a healing draught!
Potion! Bombs for all here!
Supplies available!
Here they come!
My nightmar!
Good shot!
Nothing but money, and it's paid with that!
Look out for them black rats! It's fighting, get clear! Couldn't hit their side of the mountain! Chopping to pieces! Potion here!
Prepare yourselves. Rats stink all over. Here they come.
Urban, we'll try to leave you some.
Hook rat's about to get him!
Bring the ass to me! The strangler dies! What are them black rats? Black rat's mine!
Aim for the head!
Black rat's mine!
Storm cannon!
Been back for how long?
Ah, a bomb! That'll wreak some carnage! Grab those bandages, Dory!
One moment. For the order! Cheers!
Healing tools if you're feeling weak, strangler-azi. It's a strangler! Don't let it grab you! Get out of its sight!
Strangler's got him!
Assassin rat's dead!
I prefer your strangler gasps.
Chasing victory, enjoy it while it lasts.
Healing draught!
Bomb! Potion over here!
Supplies have arrived.
Let's start another battle! We're gonna have to... worthless rat packs! Perhaps you should drink more, Azungie. You're already so unsteady on your feet.
No, ya! Protect me!
Beware it! We've lost! Fight! Get clear! Now hatch!
They have a cogrey! They have a cogrey! What a brute! Pack it to pieces! Takes some killing, that will. They have a cogrey! A cogrey! We sound hungry. Let it taste steel! Ratogga, we'll slaughter the brute! A cogrey! A cogrey! What a brute! Pack it to pieces! Ratogga, they're quicker than they look! Ratogga, we'll slaughter the brute! A cogrey! It takes some killing, that will. They have a cogrey! Pick up your feet, strangler-azi! They have a cogrey! We sound hungry. Let it taste steel! If I drop... Croak! What a brute! Pack it to pieces! A cogrey! Yeah! It's black crap! I'm done here. They have a cogrey! It takes some killing, that will. Ratogga, we'll slaughter the brute! Ratogga, they're quicker than they look! There's some wobble shit, that keep going! Keep on being dory! You see? That's fine axe work, even if I do say so myself! Your own fault, eh? What a brute! Pack it to pieces! Come on, ya! Come, the cogrey! I'm a present for ya! You see? That's fine axe work, even if I do say so myself!
This is a good...
That's weak. I wasn't napping.
You look ridiculous. Stop jumping around.
Some assistance!
Medical supplies!
No rest for the wicked. Stay ready.
By the comet!
Here they come.
The tide comes and finds me ready!
The hot rat's dead and gone!
Bomb here! Potion here. I can't vouch for the taste. Healing tools if you're feeling weak, strangler-azi. Croak! The gas rat!
The warrior lads, I'll have it!
We've lost, swordsman! Stone vermin! Black rat! Kill that scrooge!
Look, potion!
Keep your fighting!
They're playing!
Nice kill!
I just don't like a loop. I'd kill both of you!
Bring the ass boom, another black fur! That black rat's mine! Bring the ass boom, another black fur!
All the wizards, serious face on the ground!
Urban, we'll try to leave you some. Don't waste that bomb. Don't waste that bomb.
Tolls, give the healing draught!
Decent effort there. But can you do it again?
By the comet! Potion! Don't waste it!
Ah, potion! Get ready. Here they come.
The craftsman needs only one shot, ruddy! Kill that gas rat! Aim for that end, wizard! Fire at the black fur ahead! It's not book burns, I'll tell you that.
A healing draught, right here.
Chop it to pieces!
Yes, gave 'em!
Bomb here!
Potion here!
Ah, a bomb! That'll wreak some carnage!
Here they come.
Medical supplies! Bring the ass beard! Gash! Gloom each magic and gloom at the ass!
Look out, gas!
Black rat's mine! Wasn't cock! Pick up your pace! No! Gash! What are them black rats? Bring the ass boom, another black fur! Black rat! Kill that scrooge!
But your technique lacks efficiency.
I'm awake. I wasn't napping.
No fussing, dwarf.
That's axe kruber.
Found a potion!
A bomb, just like Okri used to make!
Get ready. Here they come.
Birmingham swarm!
It never's gonna chance! You're striking hard, wizard! Get around, you goon! Face it head on! Where the stone's from!
The wind's turning against me!
Blacky black fur! Fire at the black fur ahead! Come on, baby, black fur bastard! Give the gunner a moving target! Croak! That rattling's about to fire! Give the gunner a moving target! Rattling gunner will target the dwarf! Yes, he sure did! Oh, that's you in my ritual! The rattling gunner holds high the biggest...
Mine is turning against me!
Potion here. I can't vouch for the taste. Bomb here!
Supplies available.
Healing draught, over here!
Ah, a bomb! That'll wreak some carnage! Ratogga! Takes some killing, that will. A cogrey! Ratogga, they're quicker than they look! Ratogga, we'll slaughter the brute!
We have a much time.
A cogrey! Ratogga, we'll slaughter the brute! They have a cogrey!
They have a recogrey!
You see? That's fine axe work, even if I do say so myself!
It's big victory, eh? Enjoy it while it lasts. Hear that?
It's not book burns, I'll tell you that.
Oh ho ho, here they come.
I can hear them.
Keep your eye peeled.
There, black rat!
Blackrat's mine! Blackrat! Oh vermin! What are them black rats? Brimmius, boom, another black fur! Brimmius, boom, another black fur! Tyraki Blackfur ahead! Tyraki Blackfur! Tyraki Blackfur ahead!
In the bed for how long?
Found another bomb!
No time to rest, slack jaws. Oh ho ho, here they come.
Stand fast, sting, bratzi. They're only rats. Watch that rocky! The sergeant's been grabbed!
Gunner's dead. There, black rat! Your striking armor!
That black rat's mine! Blackrat! Too late! What are them black rats?
Still standing, I see. I approve.
Don't waste that bomb!
No rest for the wicked. Stay ready. Oh ho ho, here they come.
Yes, sir! Aim for the head, maker! Aim for the head!
Tyraki Blackfur ahead! Sorry! Got you for that, Rocky!
Open the eyes!
Croak! Assassin! Steady, Dory. Assassin inside.
We've got the assassin!
Ah, a bomb that'll wreak some carnage!
I gave you four a sweep so you weren't going to feel like that.
Bomb! Potion here!
Any second now.
Pain won't stop me!
Show yourself, assassin Rocky!
Here they come.
Assassin rat's dead.
I do not go willingly to Mo's impression.
That looks bad, Grimgy. Someone grab those bandages. Ammunition, fill your pouches.
Rat bastard fires at me! A warrior bat!
Incoming rattling fire! He wants the dwarf dead for sure! Couldn't hit that side of the mountain! It's firing! Blackrat! Kill that scrooge! Blackrat! Kill that scrooge! What are them black rats? A bomb just like Okri used to make! Potion over here!
All right then. Stock up on supplies. I know you want to.
But your healing dropped!
Oh ho ho, here they come.
The child of Sagaraki! If only Okri could see me! There can be no rest for us. Not yet. Aim for the head, wizard! That armor is cooked!
Bomb's here. Let's hope the black powder inside is dry.
Prepare yourselves. Rats stink all over. Oh ho ho, here they come.
The strangler dies! Now! It's a strangler! Go with the rocket!
That's a rat, ogre!
This is no time to keep lying down, Zabim! We sound hungry, let it taste steel! Takes some killing, that will.
Ratoga, they're quicker than they look!
Takes some killing, that will.
What a brute! Pack it to pieces! They have a recogrey!
Come on, recogrey, I'm present for ya!
Ratoga, they're quicker than they look!
Ratoga, we'll slaughter the brute! We've lost the sergeant! Our wizard is dead!
What a brute! Pack it to pieces! They have a recogrey!
Ratoga, we'll slaughter the brute!
Recogrey!
Takes some killing, that will.
Recogrey! Ratoga, they're quicker than they look! Recogrey! Ratoga, they're quicker than they look! What a brute! Pack it to pieces! Ratoga, we'll slaughter the brute!
It'll take some killing, that will.
They have a recogrey! They have a recogrey!
Takes some killing, that will.
Recogrey!
Takes some killing, that will.
They have a recogrey! What a brute! Pack it to pieces!
Ratoga, we'll slaughter the brute!
What a brute! Pack it to pieces! Ratoga, they're quicker than they look! They have a recogrey! They have a recogrey!
Ratoga, we'll slaughter the brute!
Ratoga, they're quicker than they look! Here they are, fleshwood! Down, maker!
Ratoga, we'll slaughter the brute!
Recogrey! What a brute! Pack it to pieces!
Keep moving, Dory!
Recogrey!
Takes some killing, that will.
Ratoga, they're quicker than they look!
The beasts sound hungry, let it taste steel!